And welcome to our meeting Tuesday, January 30th. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Leiberman?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of presentations today. We're going to start, I'm going to ask Jessica to come up, and we're going to talk about the UNCF kickoff.
Yes, thank you. I am thrilled to be here before you talk about our dynamic and exciting UNCF Workplace Giving Campaign. This is that time of year, February marks, February 1st marks our annual campaign. And this year is also special because it is the UNCF's national 80th anniversary. And really celebrating the impact of their work and honoring the legacy of transferring in the future of our young people. And so again, we want to thank you for your leadership. Really, it's what makes this campaign so magical really is the leadership of our county commissioners and other elected officials really making it such a special campaign. So without further ado, I just want to start by talking about the impact that our campaign has made and will continue to make. And that really is truly because of the incredible employees we have here at Montgomery County, but also because of the dedicated campaign coordinators. I know I have several of them here in the audience. I'm going to take a point of privilege and ask them to stand up so we can give them a round of applause. Because really, it is those campaign coordinators that have helped us make this impact. And so just for a moment, I want to take the opportunity to talk about the impact our campaign has made in this community. We are the number one, number one, that'll be a theme, campaign in our region. And that's been consistent since we've really launched our campaign. We've hit a campaign height of $35,000 before the pandemic and in last year raised $27,000. Our goal this year is to kind of get back up there with raising at least $30,000 through our Workplace Giving Campaign. And again, the important piece to remember about our campaign is that all the funds that we raise go to our Montgomery County Scholarship. And I'll talk more about how that, how that's impacted our community. But that really is the critical piece that all of these funds raised really help to directly serve our young people in advancing their education. So exciting things to come just days away. But one of the things that we're bringing back is our signature Uno tournament. It was a fan favorite last year. And you'll see there pictured our champions from Adamus Board, Bonnie Ashley in the runner-up. Her, actually, her husband Alan Ashley from building regulations. So the tournament really is a great opportunity to bring fun into a little competition, obviously, into how we raise funds for the campaign. Entry fee of just $10 and that you really are able to compete if you're, if you're the winning one all the way through for a four-week kind of round from department finals to building rounds to then a kind of overall semifinals and a final round. So again, there can only be Uno champion. Had some help with that little pun there, but we're really excited again to be bringing back our Uno tournament. And again, we're really asking employees just to use their lunchtime hours to pay a part of some friendly competition throughout the month of February. We also have so many more things and I can't obviously cover all of them. I went too fast in the time we have today, but want to give you a little bit of a taste of what we have before us this month. You know, Valentine's Day is just around the corner. Some of you may or may not begun doing your shopping, but if you need a little help, we have two Valentine's Day raffle baskets full of lots of goodies to help make your Valentine feel special. And we have raffle tickets through our coordinators. Be glad to sell you a couple or several mini raffle tickets for that. Also for our sports fans, we have a Super Bowl raffle basket. And I think the, the theme was it's everything you need in a bucket. It's a party in a bucket. So everything you want to have fun to celebrate your favorite team is right there in that basket. And then if you know our campaigns, we really love food. And so thanks to the Recorder's Office, there is a Dine to Donate being championed on March the 1st. So you can go watch Uno for our finals and also have a nice tasty lunch. All the proceeds or a good portion of proceeds will be supporting our UNCF campaign. So again, several opportunities to be a part of the campaign, really something for everybody. It's kind of how we think about how we structure all of our month-long activities. If, for those that like to shop that may be interested in art or other kind of goodie baskets, we have a series of things that'll be in our silent auction. That silent auction will kick off towards the middle of the month, February the 15th through the 29th. We will have an opportunity to go on and check out your favorite items and get bidding early and often. So you might take home your favorite thing from our silent auction. And again, there's so many other things happening too at the department level, chili cook-offs, breakfast events. And so all of that information will live on our mcohioh.org UNCF website. We'll also be working with our great communications team to push out information about some of those key events throughout that month. But again, can't underscore enough how important this campaign is in helping us impact the lives of our community's future through young people and through our children. Where scholarships are open to high school seniors that are residents of Montgomery County. And it's open to all students regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or religion. It really is an opportunity for us to pour back into our young people in the community. And so students have to begin to attend to two or four-year institution to qualify. But really, it's open to our Montgomery County young people and young adults. And so the application will be coming soon. It'll be an opportunity for folks to go on and check out our scholarship as well as many more scholarships that are available to help them advance to and through school. And again, I went through that quickly, but I know we have a lot of presentations. I wanted to make sure I covered at least the highlights to get you all really excited about what's to come in the next month or so. And again, we can't do this without, again, our leadership, without our employees, without our coordinators. It all comes together because everybody really puts in 110%. And so I'm pleased to not be the only person here talking about UNCF today. We have our regional coordinator, Harry Fullmore, who's come. He didn't bring the sunshine or the warm weather, but it's coming to us from Los Angeles, California. To really talk about what this year means for UNCF and the impact that it's making across our country. Harris? Turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Harry Fullmore, Regional Director, UNCF. And as Jessica mentioned, we are celebrating our 80th anniversary this year on April 25th. I've been there a quarter of the time, so 20 years. When I say 20 years, quarter of 80, that makes me sound old, but then I have to look at myself and say, you are old. But it's an honor to be here. No one does it better with more consistency than Montgomery County. So we are eternally grateful for the support that we have from the coordinators and from the commission. So on behalf of our 37 historically black colleges and universities, the 55,000 students that we help every single year, and to our tons and tons of volunteer, thank you so very much for supporting our efforts. In the 80 years since our inception, UNCF has raised more than $6 billion, that's billion with a B, to help get students in college and through college. We also provide operating support for 37 historically black colleges and universities. Those are the private HBCUs, fully accredited, four-year institutions. 65,000 students that we help annually, and they go to 1,100 different schools nationwide. So contrary to belief, our students don't just have to go to our 37 HBCUs. And so we're a college of their choice in many instances. We administer about 400 scholarship programs every single year. And as Jessica mentioned, we encourage our students to apply for multiple scholarship. Whatever he or she may qualify for, we encourage them. There's no such thing as a permanent no if they don't receive a scholarship. One time, apply for it again. And a few years ago, we moved to our headquarters from Fairfax, Virginia to Washington DC. Our leadership said that if there's any discussions about minority higher education, then UNCF should be at the table. So we do a lot of advocating for minority higher education. And just wanted to show our founders, Dr. William Patterson and obviously Mayor McLeod-Bethune. These are the founders. The idea was that we work better together, many hands make light work. So pooled resources together to provide assistance to the historically black colleges and universities. Again, can't say thank you enough. Thank you, Montgomery County, for being a part of UNCF's legacy. A legacy is built on partnerships, collaboration, and a common cause. So again, thank you, Montgomery County, for being a part of our legacy. Thank you for, Montgomery County, for helping to transform the future. You know, we are in today, and today's technology, today's knowledge is not for, is not tomorrow. And we are so pleased that you, we are partnering with you and that you will be a part of our transforming the future. So again, on behalf of our 37 member institutions, the 65,000 students that we were able to fund every single year, and the volunteers like yourself, we can't do it without you. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm supposed to turn it over to someone else? Sure.
Back to Jerry. I just want to add that we are so proud of the work that our team does, every one of our employees that gives year after year. We're really happy that we can be one of your best. So thank you for being here, and you didn't bring us sunshine, but that's okay. We're going to get it soon enough.
Yeah, it's locked in the car.
It's all right, it's all right. But thank you, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to do a picture?
Yeah, we'll do a quick photo.
Photo, Tom Gang. Oh, photo?
Do you want us down there?
Where do you want us?
Down here.
Robert, what do you want us to do? Up front, he said front. Okay, all right. Well, now we have a fun, fun thing to talk about. I'm going to ask Dr. Pierce Mobley to come on up. Carolyn was able to go to the unboxing of the robot. But yeah, I know, we're just asked if she could go to see. But we're going to go meet Pepper, but let's talk about Pepper.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Commissioners, esteemed guests and residents. I'm excited to have the opportunity to talk to you about some groundbreaking ideas and technologies that we're going to be using to serve Montgomery County residents. I'm Dr. Michelle Chris Mobley, as said, and I'm the Director of the Stillwater Center. And today's presentation is going to introduce you to something very fabulous, a fantabulous robot, and the name is Pepper. And Pepper promises to revolutionize the way that we provide health care in the community. Many of you may not be aware of Stillwater Center, but it's home to 98 individuals who have severe to profound developmental disabilities. And they are some of the most vulnerable citizens that we care for in the community. It is an ICF, or an intermediate care facility, and we provide full-level services which include health care. We provide medications, we provide habilitative services, and respite care in a clean, safe environment. If you can look here, you'll see that the immediate, intermediate care facilities, we're one of the largest in Ohio, and we're proud of that. And we are also certified to provide ventilator care. And families entrust their individuals to live at Stillwater because they know it's a home environment, and they also expect us to be their family and provide supportive services to them. But we could not do that without the unwavering support of the commission and leadership as well as funding from the Human Services Levy. That's important to us. So just as our county has become diverse, so has the population at Stillwater, and we're proud of that. Many of our individuals are non-English speaking. And so we had to come up with an opportunity to be able to bridge those gaps of communication. We have children as young as 18 months, and our oldest resident will be 81 years old this year. We also have individuals who are non-English speaking, that is not their primary language. So we have a family that speaks Arabic, another family that we serve that speaks Spanish, and a third family that speaks Swahili. And it was a real challenge when we were trying to buy Christmas gifts last year because I was actually looking for Swahili Christmas music. And so we recognized that we needed to be able to bridge that communication gap. And so that's kind of how this all started with Pepper. We started investigating assistive technologies about a year ago, and we got into the idea of what technologies are out there to use in a residential environment. And we knew that the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities at that time was experimenting with smart homes, giving people freedom and independence. So we wanted to see what options were available for us. And so I wrote a proposal to the Ohio Department of Disabilities telling them, hey, I want to get into the realm of robotics and assistive technologies. And so we were rewarded a service technology grant, which basically means they gave us a consultant to come in, brainstorm, and think about different ideas. And the search led us to Pepper. And so she's a humanoid robot, and we are saying it's gender neutral. So it is a humanoid robot, and we're going to show you a small video of Pepper.
What's only four feet tall, weighs just 62 pounds, but is filled with endless possibilities? Pepper. Join the movement to enhance and elevate Pepper, the emotional humanoid robot built to benefit mankind. This is Pepper today. Where will you take Pepper tomorrow? Visit developer.sofbankrobotics.com.
That's wonderful.
Amazing.
Pepper is going to be able to expand our capabilities to provide quality health care. And we want to make sure that we implement Pepper in an ethically responsible way. And I want our team to stand up from Stillwater because I do think we have some managers in the room that work so diligently. If you guys could just stand for a moment, I know you're shy. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
It takes a team effort when you try to pull something like this together. And I don't see IT and Uchenna and Benjamin English, but certainly you cannot implement a robot or robotics without your information technology people. So if you look at our population, we have about 25% of our residents are children. And so we want to be able to have a mascot in our children's home, and thus this is Pepper. Pepper can do some really interesting things, we're finding out over the last couple of days. Pepper will be able to read stories and sing songs to our children in their primary language. Pepper will be able to tell the history of Stillwater when you come into the door and she greets you or it greets you. Pepper will be able to help our nurses with dosage calculations. I also found out that Pepper has some pretty good jokes. Pepper can dance. And Pepper can also tell the weather, which I thought was pretty interesting. But I think helping our nurses and being available in the environment allows them to focus on other tasks, higher-level tasks. So I don't have to have a hap provider spend an hour reading a story. They can do habilitative options with our residents while the robot reads. The cost for Pepper was $44,000. And we had support from the Ohio Department of Developmental Disabilities to do that because we knew that was a pretty heavy lift for us to be able to do that. And the technology expert basically came in and said, these are the things that you can do in your environment that are appropriate for the population that you serve. And we were not able to cover the full cost, and so we went out to find a partner. And that partner was the Caring Hearts Foundation. And they gave us $20,000 to help to defray the cost for Pepper. And I believe we have someone from the foundation with us today, Leslie Khan, if you want to come up. And Leslie hopefully will tell you a few things about the Caring Hearts Foundation because we're just ecstatic about this wonderful gift.
Hi, my name is Leslie Khan. Thank you all for listening to me today. I was very excited to, for the opportunity to help Stillwater with Pepper. My background, I've been a nurse, born and raised in Dayton, been a nurse for over 30 years, and recently stepped down from my position as CEO from our healthcare staffing company in which we partnered with Stillwater for a couple decades probably. And, and then I was blessed with that transition in my life to be able to start the Caring Heart Foundation. So our mission is to change lives one cause at a time. So our sole purpose is to partner with other charities to help make Montgomery County, specifically the city of Dayton, a better place for our members of the community. Anything that we can do, and it's just our way of giving back how good Dayton and Montgomery County has been to me all of my life, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, if you'd like to join us down here, we have a check presentation we'd like to get.
Absolutely.
We're going to do the robot in the background?
Oh, yeah.
Come on. Stillwater?
It's still water.
Oh, she's back there.
Oh, I was like, where's she go?
You're a little tall, do you want to go between them? Yeah.
We've been just learning.
Well, we cannot wait to meet Pepper. Yeah. I know Carolyn. I talked about it last week. You know how excited I was. About Pepper, well, I'm trying to find where my. You're going to understand when you meet. I'm sure. I call it her, but him, it, whatever. They, yeah. All right. All right. The engineer doesn't have anything today? I'm disappointed.
That's quite unusual.
It's okay, you don't have to be sorry. Oh, actually, we're going to do that in a few minutes. Jerry. Thank you, though. We haven't forgotten. Thank you for pointing that out. I should have given you the note. I know, Ward, I should have given you the note I got about it. I know, I know. You know, maybe someday, maybe someday our assistant prosecutor will be like Pepper. Can you imagine all the knowledge that, you know, they could just spew out the law immediately? Okay, County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the County Sheriff, Resolution 0194 extend the price agreement with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for detention food services for the sheriff's office and juvenile court through February 15th, 2024. And Resolution 0195 approve the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services pre-award condition forms related to the 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Range Task Force.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor? Aye. I just, I get so fascinated about grants because you have to jump through so many hoops. So this is the pre-award condition form.
That's correct. That's basically allowing them to apply.
I understand, yeah. Okay, County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have two agreements, two new agreements and four to renew. The two new agreements start with Resolution 196. This is with Mark Evans of Bricker Grayden LLP in the amount not to exceed $40,000. And 197 with Brenda A. Wamer of Dinsmore &amp; Scholl LLP in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Then we have four renewal agreements. Those are 198 with Glenn McMurray and Craig Sweeney of Taft, Zatinius &amp; Hollister LLP in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Resolution 199 with Mark Evans, Jeffrey D. Harrison, Arthur P. Schultheis of Bricker Grayden LLP in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Resolution 200 with Tom Schiff and the law firm of Hawkwalt &amp; Schiff LLC in an amount not to exceed $5,000. And Resolution 2001 with Linda Singer of the law firm of Motley Rice LLC.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. The Treasurer's Office.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under the Treasurer's Office, Resolution 202 accept the investment reports for August, September, and October of 2023.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor? Aye. Auditor's Office.
Under the Auditor's Office, Resolution 0203 authorize an agreement with local government services section of the Office of the Auditor of State for compilation of financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2023, at a cost not to exceed $42,500 through December 31st, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. The county coroner is being polled, data processing.
Under data processing, Resolution 205 authorize an agreement with Service Express for network maintenance in an amount not to exceed $37,441.20 through February 28th, 2025.
Move to approve. I second. All those in favor? Aye. County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, approve the minutes of the meetings, January 23rd, 2024. And three resolutions, first one is 0206, approval of bills. 0207, approval of travel and expenses, and 208, approval of personal actions. All those lists are available in the Clerk's office.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Administrative Services. Tyler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today, beginning with Resolution 209. This authorizes a consulting services agreement with Affiliated Engineers Incorporated for a security threat assessment for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department in an amount not to exceed $251,220 through September 30th of 2024. Resolution 210 authorizes a grant agreement with the Society for the Improvement of Conditions for Stray Animals, also known as SICSA, to establish terms, conditions, and requirements governing the grant agreement for the Trap Neuter Return Program in an amount not to exceed $10,000 through December 31st of 2024. Resolution 211 authorize a renewal option for the price agreement with Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services for temporary nursing services for the Stillwater Center through January 31st of 2025. Resolution 212 is to self-certify the micro-purchase threshold not to exceed $50,000 through December 31st of 2024. The next two resolutions authorize agreements, beginning with 213 with Palisades Arcadia Baseball LLC, owner of the Dayton Dragons, for advertising and play ball sponsorship services in an amount not to exceed $80,400 through September 30th of 2024. And Resolution 214 is with Reftelis Financial Consultants, Inc. for management of the solid waste annual property charges in an amount not to exceed $220,987 through December 31st of 2024. The last two resolutions authorize Justice Web Agreements. The first is 215 with the city of Dayton through December 31st of 2024. And 216 is with Butler Area Courts Probation Department through December 31st of 2033.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Environmental Services, we have Resolution 217 accept the 20% performance bond for the Hunter's Path Development Phase 2 in the amount of $84,192.48. Resolution 218 reject the two bids received for the Clear Creek Electrical Upgrade Project due to exceeding twenty percent of the engineer's estimate and re-advertise for a reduced scope of work and estimated cost of one million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The next three or two men agreements for the design and/or preparation of detailed construction plans and specifications. Resolution two nineteen with Fishbeck for the Locust Camp Water Main Replacement Project by adding sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars to the original amount for revised total of a hundred and forty-eight thousand and nine dollars. Resolution two twenty with Choice One Engineering for the Green Hill and Hornwood Water Main Replacement Project by adding ten thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to the original amount for revised total of one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and extending the term through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And resolution two twenty-one with American Structure Point Incorporated for the Palm Drive Storm Water Lift Station Project by adding two hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to the original amount for revised total of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and extending the term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And the final three to accept subdividers contracts versus uh, resolution two twenty-two with Oasis Turf and Tree Incorporated for the Oasis Turf and Tree Development. Resolution two twenty-three with VWC Holdings LTD for the Villages of Winding Creek Boulevard Development Section Ten. And the last one is resolution two twenty-four with West Carrollton Board of Education for the West Carrollton City Schools Public Water Main Extension Development.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor? O and B, John.
Hi, we have one resolution for this uh, approval. Approve a service order renewal agreement with ClearGov Inc. for budgeting software and amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand six hundred and four dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four with options to renew.
Move to approve. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Human services, Jerry.
Yes, commissioners, we have resolutions under the Human Services Planning and Development Department. Resolution two twenty-six is to accept the recommendations of the Family and Children First Council as they relate to the Healthy Aging Grant and authorize the Human Services Planning and Development Department to negotiate agreements with selected providers. And I'll remind you, this was money that we received from the state to support our seniors in our community. This is the first phase of funding, and it really focused on food, housing, and internet access. We will have additional recommendations coming from the Family and Children First Council, which may include additional core services and best practices as well.
This was a really big deal that we got this.
It is a really big deal that we received this money.
That is great.
And we have to spend it by the end of September, I think it is.
It had to come fast.
Yes.
But the need is great, and we have great organizations who are already on it, so they knew immediately how they could put it to work.
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely lift the senior community.
Um, and then also, we have um, other agreements, two twenty-seven, which is for the YWCA of Dayton for homeless crisis response programs, um, services in the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And as I said, with an agreement we had last week, the majority of this funding goes for rental and utility assistance for um, families in our community. And then I'm gonna take a break from the agenda and ask Jessica if she would come up, because we have some really hot news off the press. And so I wanted her to share.
It is hot off the press. Yesterday, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development announced their continuum of care grant awards. That is our single largest funding source for a lot of our housing and homeless services in our community. And so, our community um, was awarded over fourteen million dollars to help support housing. Yes, it is worth a hand clap.
Huge.
Many of those are renewal projects, so of of those, twenty-one are renewals. However, we received two bonus projects, and those are competitive funding process. So, it's really a big deal that that meant our community, based on our system performance and need, was able to secure two additional programs that total almost a million dollars. One um, for rapid rehousing, so kind of as Jerry shared, case management and rental assistance um, for people that are experiencing homelessness. And then one around our domestic violence coordinated entry, kind of how we help those survivors of domestic violence access housing and homeless services. So, we're extremely excited. In the future, you will see resolutions accepting for Montgomery County awards, but wanted to at least have the press share the great news for our community and ability to, again, serve more people that are experiencing homelessness in Montgomery County.
Very exciting. Very exciting. Thanks. That is great news. Great news. If you are.
We like when you bring good news.
Next, resolution two twenty-eight is the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District, Jessica Jenkins and the Human Services Planning and Development Department, HSPD, to use the services of Ms. Jenkins as executive director and the professional services of the HSPD staff in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And then resolution two twenty-nine is the Arts and Cultural District for the Preservation in Support of Arts and Cultural Heritage in an amount not to exceed a million dollars through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Woo-hoo. That's, yeah, that's great. So, now we're gonna ask Brad to come up. And Brad Rutter is coming up. Um, you know, Brad has uh, kindly uh, helped us and been a part of that. Well, I'm gonna let you talk about what it is you do.
Thank you. And I have Diane Farrell joining me, our treasurer, as well, from the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District Board. Uh, so, behalf on the board, but on behalf of the board, uh, Diane and I would like to thank you, uh, the county commissioner, or Board of County Commissioners, for your continued and ongoing support of the arts and cultural heritage of Montgomery County. Uh, this year's investment, or this investment, will help to provide, first, general operating support for our major arts organizations in the area. Um, it will fund artist opportunity grants to uh, enable our individual artists, uh, or, yes, our individual artists to build their talents and enhance their skills through professional development and other opportunities. Uh, it'll also provide funding for special projects throughout the community. And finally, it will uh, provide mini grants that will help create new uh, new programs and events throughout the community. So, a breadth or a wide breadth of impact to the arts and culture throughout Montgomery County. We also want to thank you for uh, soon appointing some new board members to our board.
We're working on it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're getting ahead of ourselves, but I know, as a board, we've really taken a strategic look at how we can really represent all of Montgomery County. So, to that, I think we wanted to thank you for uh, for that and staying true to our mission and values.
And I'll just add um, to what Brad has just shared, that we have also spent a good deal of time over the last year reevaluating our own commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We have revised um, our mission and vision statements to make sure that we are holding ourselves and those that we fund accountable for aligning themselves with your goals and your goals to make sure that we have a healthy and vibrant community for all of the taxpayers that we take very seriously, that we know we're representing um, when we're awarding this funding. So, we do our utmost best um, to consider carefully all those requests that come through and make sure that every citizen of Montgomery County sees themselves reflected in the arts and cultural heritage that we're making possible through this grant. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank you for uh, having Jessica and uh, join, and Liz as well, join our board as uh, the longtime executive director, Matt left. So, but he laid a great foundation for us to continue the work and for Jessica and Liz to pick up the mantle and unfortunately have to work with us to get this job done, so.
We thank you guys, because, you know, being a volunteer board member is, it isn't always easy.
Yeah.
Um, and you guys have done a wonderful job. And in fact, I saw probably yesterday, grants are opening for individual artists, is that right?
Yes.
Exactly right, yes. It's always exciting when we see those and know that, um, even with a, not a huge amount of money, that artists are really able to uh, perfect their art and share their art. And so, you guys are the ones that are pushing that out there and making it happen. And the other, last week, and I'm sure you you saw the presentation from Randy Cohen from Americans for the Arts. When you look at the economic impact, that our million dollars, uh, the return on its investment is incredible, right? And so, while we have a lot of amazing arts and culture uh, opportunities here, and and it sometimes feels like we just give a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, but we know from those organizations how much it has helped them change what they're doing and continue what they're doing. So, thanks for the role you've played.
Thank you. And, you know, we're very proud, I think, of our community because we have a great, great arts and cultural district here, and we're just so pleased and proud. And it's great to, you know, show them off and and just everything. But I have to say, you talked about Matt Dunn. Well, before Matt was Judy Mott.
Judy Mott, that's right.
She was the first one.
Yeah.
Back in the nineties, so.
She created the district.
Not that I remember that, but my mother told me.
Your mother told you. Well, you know, Judy really created the foundation for the Arts and Cultural District, and and we were very thankful for her, and of course, Matt, and we miss him, but we still see him. We see him on the social pages.
Yeah. We just saw him last week.
Well, we do in person too, but he's busy with his new uh, mission, so we're happy for him.
Thank you all so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Do we wanna, yes, of course we do. And Jessica? Say it one more time.
Look at them all running up here, getting everything.
Okay, so we need to vote on that. Do I have enough?
Well, no, we have more. We have more. Isn't there one more?
One more.
One more, okay. Sorry. Yeah.
So, we have one resolution under the Department of Job and Family Services. It's resolution two thirty to authorize an agreement with Compassion Care LP for substitute care services through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we are now at business services. Twana.
I really just showed up today to support Jessica.
But I'm glad you're here.
But I'm here to read our resolutions.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, resolution zero two three one is to authorize an agreement with IK Consulting LLC for a seller platform support for the Building Regulations Department in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Resolution uh, two three two is to authorize a subordination agreement with Grand Place Senior Housing for the rehabilitation of affordable rental units in the city of Dayton. Uh, resolution two three three authorizes an economic development government equity, also known as EDGE, agreement with the city of Dayton for Caney Aerospace Inc., also known as Project Wonka, in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand or six percent of the total project cost, whichever is less. And finally, uh, resolution two three four authorizes a co-share membership agreement with Arcade Innovation Hubs Inc. for international and domestic prospects in an amount not to exceed six thousand through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have another great EDGE project on there.
Yep.
That's great. Okay. Um. Alright, my computer's, my screen's being weird. Um, under county, I got it, thank you though. Under county commissions, uh, we have twenty-four, two three five, and that is to appoint Jason Antone, Kara Powers, Daniel Tess, Dana Graham, Gabriella Pickett, and Gregory Shanga Freeman to the Arts and Cultural District for three-year terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And they both just left, or else they would have been able to be here for that. Um, appoint Victoria Watson, Tony Winsler, Tom Peebles, David Bills, and Bill Sutter to serve on the Residential Appeals Board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, and that is resolution two three six. And two three seven is to appoint Commissioner Carolyn Rice with Tyler Small, serving as her designee, and Sheriff Rob Struck to the nine-one-one program review committee. That'll be fun, Carolyn.
Yes.
Tyler? It's very important.
It's very important.
Fun is the word that I would associate. One more, one more committee. Um, two three eight is to confirm the Township Association's appointment of Sharon Lowery, Washington Township trustee, and Roland Winburne as an alternate to the Economic Development Government Equity or EDGE Advisory Committee to fill an unexpired term through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And two three nine is to confirm the Greater Dayton Mayor's and Managers Association appointments of Brian Chukowski, Keith Johnson, Glenn Madden, and Bill Singer to the Economic Development Government Equity EDGE Advisory Committee through December first of twenty twenty-five. Okay, move to approve.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we do have two citizens signed up to speak, so I'll ask you to come up, give us your name, your address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Uh, first is Robin Mobley. Robin, do you want to come on up?
Is this where you come? Because this is my first time.
Yeah, yes. No, that's fine. Okay, somebody probably needs to time me. She will. Have to calm down for a minute because I'm very upset about um, a situation with one of my properties in Jefferson Township. I asked to speak with you guys in regards to the fraudulent quick deed um, that happened to me. I'm gonna address one thing first, is I think I see one of the gentlemen that is here today, and I believe you're the prosecutor that came to the court when I was there? With an attorney?
Yes, I was one.
Okay, so I want to address that first. I'm the victim here, and my property was taken. This gentleman and the attorney that was with you, I don't know, Mr. Peterson, maybe his last name. I'm at this desk right here as the victim, representing myself, for one, because I can't afford an attorney. I'm recovering from lung cancer, so let's get that out the way. Yes, I'm known in the city. Yes, I'm already on television, personality, and model, all that. But I just beat cancer, okay? So, I'm here at the table in the courtroom. The attorney that's representing the crook that took my property, you guys walked right by me, never addressed me, never said anything to me. And you spent a lot of time, sir, talking to that attorney who has a very sketchy background himself. So, that's one thing I wanted to address. You're here, and I wanted to let you know, you're the what, assistant prosecutor or something like that, that um, we're not getting any help as citizens when we come and say, I'm jumping ahead of myself, but I saw you. So, I had to address that. You may not have done it intentionally, sir, but that made me feel some kind of way. My best friend was there as well, and she thought that that was a concern, that the prosecutor's office, the attorneys that are representing the county or the detective that did not show up when I subpoenaed them, you guys did not acknowledge me. That is something in executive session. I'm a former Jefferson Township School Board member, if you guys would like to address that. But I saw you here, and that was very alarming to me as a citizen. First of all, I went to the Montgomery County um, Recorder's Office um, when I received something in regards to um, my property that I had did um, like a land contracting with this person. And while I was out of town filming in Atlanta, he went down and did a quick claim deed. When I first went in there, I felt some kind of way uh, when I tried to express to everybody and let them know that that was not my signature and that was a fraudulent deed. How I was treated in the beginning with the staff, the lack of concern, and the fact to tell me, just get an attorney. Go to the prosecutor's office. That was an issue. I ended up calling back and also ended going up there, and that's when Mr. Brandon was there. He got the ball rolling. When he left, he sent it to Ms. Stacy Benson. Ms. Stacy sent it over to um, the prosecutor's office. There was an email. Um, it got back to me um, that because I spoke to the media, that um, some people in that department was upset, sir. So, I don't know if you had a conversation with Mr. Dillon about that, but I I was told that this Montgomery County was upset because I was talking about my property and what happened to me. So, therefore, I could never talk to that man again. He, after I talked to him them couple of times, I never got a phone call back or anything. That's one thing. I thank Stacy and I thank Brandon for jumping on um, my situation, evaluating the deed, and saw that there was a concern. However, one- However, once it got to the point where I got over to the prosecutor's office and spoke to the detective, and the person is deceased, I was just told that this person cannot be convicted because he's deceased. So therefore, I am left defending myself right now because I can't afford an attorney. I went to court, I represented myself. That gentleman and another attorney came in that was representing. I sent an subpoena to Ms. Stacy, she didn't show up. I sent a subpoena to the detective that sent the email to Stacy, he didn't show up either. I went and got the paperwork to verify that that document did get somewhere, and I was told that I got it right here. That's why I'm saying some things I know that is best to say in executive session, but I'm not here without anything that I can back up. But I want y'all to know how I feel as a citizen in Montgomery County, Dayton, Ohio, that just fought for my life, and I have no support whatsoever. When you guys are talking about, talking on the news about that bill, what is it, 189 or 160? Whatever the bill is that will help these people when you sell your home. They can't sell home with taxes, but what about us people that don't have the money to pay? When your staff makes a mistake and accepts a deed that is a fraudulent deed, nobody, you're frowning, but nobody is helping us, sir. There's no funding, there's no money, nothing for us.
Thank you for sharing with us. I know that we're going to make an appointment to have some follow-up with you. This is happening all over, right? We know that.
Yes.
And I know you've met with the recorder, Stacy, and she has tried to put in a system that will help stop this, right?
Yes.
So there is work being done. It's become alarmingly clear that this is happening more often all around the country with bad actors who are doing these kinds of things. And I want you to know that we understand your situation, and I'm not sure we have an answer right now. But as we get follow-up, and we'll make sure we're talking to the appropriate people with you. And all we can say is this is one of those things that, even though it's not the commissioners, but this is where you can come have a voice on this, and that's fine. But we will, I'm not sure, again, with that, and as you said, we'll have to further discuss this, but...
Because it's been going on, I've been dealing with this for probably months. And I've started getting sick again, and I've been dealing with it for months. And I know that Stacy Nelm does have that program out, thank you for it. I do radio and television as well, so I've advised people to sign up for that program. So thank you guys for that.
And the thing to add about that is, you know, we're seeing a lot of commercials for places that charge to do that, but it's free in Montgomery County with the Recorder's Office. Judy used to be the recorder.
Yeah.
So this is, it's happened over the years, but right now, it's become like a...
It's an epidemic, really.
It is an epidemic. And I'm so sorry it happened to you. And again, we'll follow up with another meeting. I think you're going to talk to Yvonne, correct? And we're going to set...
Yeah, I did call and leave a message, so I apologize for taking up a lot of time, but I just want you guys to know, and you're right, it's not just me. When my, it's been all on the news, and every time it airs, I'm getting inbox and everything. Oh, that happened to me. Oh, that a woman was in ICU at Miami Valley and called me to tell me about her building. And they're saying that they're coming over to the prosecutor's office, they're saying that they're paying money in court and everything. It's like, it just needs to be said that while you guys are voting on things in regards to the taxes and how you're going to sell a property, we need to figure out funding, grant to help these people when we make a mistake. Because the county made the mistake for taking it. And when you make that mistake, who helps us? So those that are looking for grants, and you guys are up here talking about grants, just think about those people that can't afford it or have health problems or whatever. And I can't afford an attorney, and I'm representing myself.
Did you? I'm sorry, because we're going to talk later, but have you called legal aid?
Yeah, I don't qualify because they're talking about the other house.
That's fine, okay, that's okay, that's okay. All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Feaster, where are you? There he is, coming up. And you know the drill, three minutes.
Yes, Sir Willie. I'd like to talk today about Ms. Mary McDonald. You know, recently, you know, she filed her appeal, and she won her appeal, you know, but the only thing I'd say about this is, this was a woman for what, 18, 20 years of her life? She was a Democrat. All of a sudden, you're going to jump the boat that quick? And you not you declare yourself a Republican? Come on, woman, come on. You don't have no faith, you don't have no backbone? Come on now. Listen, what you think Winnie Mandela would call you? What you think Angela Davis would call you? What do you think Hillary Tubman would call you? Woman, please. I know what I want to call you, but I can't because Deputy Hammond would get upset with me if I said the wrong thing in my mouth. But I, you know, it makes me think about the Bible, man. You know, in the Bible, when it says, "When the crucifix rolls three times, you're going to deny me." You fit that description. Come on, what are you? Are you a Republican for 20 years of your life? Or are you a Democrat for 20 years of your life? You've been advocating that forever, but now you don't get no Democratic backing, so now you want to be a Republican? You will never be a Republican, because you don't did half your life as a Democrat. You can never come in here and represent the Republican, you know, you're independent. But woman, you're, let me tell you something, man. I got more backbone than you. When I claim it, it is what it is. I'll fight to the bitter end. I'll never switch up in the middle. And I'm going to tell you another thing, Ms. Mary McDonald. You have a right to run. Anybody do. Let me tell you, man, God ain't going to back you. You don't have no, you ain't even true to your party. If you had stayed out there in Trump world, you'd have never came down here to declare yourself a Republican. You'll never make it, but you got a right to run. But you're not going to win, man. You're not going, you know you're not going to win. I don't know why you're doing this, you just ain't bored, you ain't got nothing to do, you know? I could throw my hat in the race for County Commission up, I'm bored, ain't got nothing to do. But you know you're not going to prevail. You know this here. I don't care who you would run against, it could be Judy, Debbie, Kelly, whoever. You're not going to win. You know that, so... You don't have, oh my God, you don't have no, to me, you don't have no respect, man. You heartless, even Hillary Tubman would look at you and be disgusted. Michelle Obama would look at you in disgust. Because you don't have no backbone, you're not true. What you are is what you're going to always be. You don't switch up when you're 50 years old, 60 years old, and go from one to the other, to the other, to the other. If I'm 60 years old, Willie gonna stay a Democrat till he die. If I'm 70 years old, Willie gonna stay a Republican till he die. I ain't switching.
Time's up, time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant County Administrator, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, good.
For job seekers, we have a construction job fair planned for February 15th from noon to four at Carolan Historical Park. We're expecting more than 50 construction employers. By attending that job fair, you can connect with some of the leading construction companies that are looking for skilled professionals. Prepare for the job fair by taking part in a job readiness workshop. You can get assistance with resume building, interview skills, and networking strategies. Stop by the Job Center Edwin C. Moses or go to thejobcenter.org online.
Thank you. And that'll be the first time we've ever been at Carolan for that event, for a job fair. So we're looking forward to that. It's a beautiful facility, as we know. And my comments just disappeared. So can I say what I'm supposed to be saying?
Well, I guess.
Clicked on it, Emily, and it just, whoo, it went away. I don't know. Oh, I could have talked about this without notes. So last week, Tyler and I, we all celebrated our successful Fatherhood Summit. And I really have to thank the Office of Strategic Initiatives, who are part of that. But we put, they put extremely hard work into that. We had excellent presenters. The Office of Reentry presented, and we had breakout sessions from Dayton Public Schools, Public Health. The Ohio Commission on Fatherhood was there, and she announced, well, she didn't really announce it. She said to our table that the state is getting ready to have Fatherhood Part II, and that Franklin County and Montgomery County are going to be the first two counties to actually benefit from that. So we're looking forward to see what that means, what it is, but sounds good. And I think it shows too that the work that Mike and team have done to make our fatherhood initiative so strong, you know, it started 14 years ago.
Yeah.
And every year, it's gotten better and better. We started the summit, I think, four years ago, Tyler? I think that was right. I think, maybe that was the fifth, fourth or fifth summit. They also do a wonderful fatherhood banquet that we always enjoy. But the topics that they covered in the breakout sessions, well, before that, Judge Parker did an excellent job with Kishinda Court in talking about what Kishinda Court is. And he had two young men there that spoke. And they spoke about why this has been so incredible for them. And one young man who'd been in the program for a year, the judge graduated him there. So he had a little graduation, he got his diploma, and it was really wonderful to see. And Judge Parker told some stories about the successes that Kishinda Court has already had. And it's only been, not even two years, so I'm really happy about that. So the afternoon sessions, we're, you know, talking about child education engagement, why it's important to know what your children are experiencing in school, preschool. And one of the sessions was the challenges for fathers when they are returning citizens. And there was a session on mental health. And so we are one of the few counties in Ohio that has an initiative just like ours. And so it's something we're very proud of, but the shout-out has to go to Dr. Newsome, who has just done an incredible job with that, Mike Newsome. And we're fortunate that he's part of the team, so it was good.
Well, yesterday, the three of us attended a Business Solutions Roundtable, where a lot of local business owners met with our workforce development team to network and discuss employer-employee relations. Workforce development staff were able to give insightful feedback on solutions to current problems employers are currently experiencing. The Q and A portion of the event discussed employee retention and training initiatives. You know, it was very interesting, it was a nice group that was there, and they had some good thoughtful questions, so I thought it went very well.
It did, most definitely. And this past week, we had the annual point in time count for homelessness. And it's done throughout the night and through the day. And it was last Wednesday, and it's actually done across the country. It's not just here, and it's always that time of the year. And it's a snapshot, and it's really critical that they do that consistently to be able to track trends, connect people with resources. And as we talked about earlier, opening up federal funding to address homelessness throughout the country through HUD. And once again, yay, so exciting about the announcement, because it'll go straight to this kind of work. And this is really a great example of collaboration. It's one of the key words that behind all of the solutions that we work on for tough issues. It's what helps us so often is the collaboration we have throughout, not only amongst ourselves, but throughout the community, with our nonprofit community, as well as our faith-based communities and everybody in between. So it's incredible. And we can never say it enough, but every single person, I mean, there is not a person who doesn't deserve to have access to affordable food and housing. It's really, really important. We won't have any numbers yet, it's too soon to tell, but we should have them next month. The other thing that I wanted to mention is today is the beginning of the season of nonviolence. Over the weekend, I had the great privilege of attending an event. There were numerous events at the Dayton International Peace Museum. I had one of their largest events they've ever held since they've been downtown. And we were graced with the great grandson of Mahatma Gandhi, Tushar Gandhi, and a cousin of Martin Luther King, speaking to the audience. And the Season of Nonviolence was actually started by Tushar's parents. And it runs from today, today is the first, today is the anniversary of the assassination of Mahatma Gandhi. And it will end, it's 64 days, and it will end on April 4th, which is the anniversary of Martin Luther King. And he told very touching stories of how Martin Luther King visited India when he was still alive, and how he took inspiration in his efforts, and you know, all of the nonviolence is so based on Gandhi. So I would invite everyone, you can look up Season of Nonviolence, it starts today. There's activities that you can do every single day between now and April 4th. I've signed up. Some of them are just to reflect on something. I think it goes without saying, we could use a lot more peace and less violence in our world, within our families, within our community, and certainly within our nation and our world. So give it a chance. Check out Season of Nonviolence, look it up on Google. I think you can be inspired. And I plan to have a great week. Thanks for bringing that up, Carolyn. You know, it seems like violence is all around us, whether it's wars, whether it's the country, and right here. And we sadly lost a young man this week out in Jefferson Township. And he was, you know, a police officer doing security guard work in the middle of the night. And it's a tragedy. And so I hope that the message of nonviolence can get out beyond, I mean, for these days, very important that our... It would be wonderful if our community heard this. You know, the senseless violence needs to stop. And by promoting, and we, you know, Peace Museum, what a wonderful thing for them to do and promote, but if we can just, in our own lives, promote peace. Promote peace. So thanks for bringing that up here.
I think it was John Lennon that gave peace a chance, you know?
That's right.
Right. Easier said than done.
It sure is.
But have a great week.
Thank you.
Well...
I move to adjourn.
That's next week.
Next week. February.
It's in February, February the 6th.
I don't know. Did you adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, then I'll second it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Have a great week.